Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of January 18th, 2024. We are reconvening the meeting which we began at 6:30 in executive session, where we discussed one matter related to a corporation that may lead to a change in contractual terms and two matters of the discussion regarding proposed litigation. I'd like you to stand for the pledge. We're being led by Mrs. Boyd's second grade class. What, they're still talking?
They're doing the second half, first half, second half.
It's in a round. We're doing the pledge in a round. Okay, so we're going to begin the meeting tonight with a recognition. We're going to recognize Eduardo Rosinos. So, Dr. Luft, do you want to start?
I've never gotten a round of applause before speaking before. Thank you. So kind of you guys. So as you had mentioned, yes, we're here to honor one very special student of ours. In fact, we were supposed to honor him last meeting, and then I discovered he actually needs a booking agent because he had a, he was already scheduled with Daniel Jones, the quarterback of the Giants, so obviously he trumps us. So we had to reschedule for this meeting. But I have to say, in my eight years now in Putnam Valley, it was one of the most special days I've had, being able to join Eduardo and his teammates and coaches down at the stadium, and it was just really a surreal experience. One of my proudest moments as a superintendent of the school district, one of my proudest moments being part of the school district, really, my entire life. So I know we're going to see a video that was actually created and produced by one of our own students, but I do want to quickly invite up Coach SASS, who's going to give a little background, and he said if we let him go before the video, he'll stop talking at some point, so come on up.
I'll do my best to keep this shorter than a lot of the football dinners. I just want to come up here and talk about Eduardo a little bit, because he deserves it. It's an honor to be able to stand up here and congratulate Eduardo. When he asked me if he could be a part of the football team, I think he was under the impression that we would be doing him a favor, but the reality of it was, he was doing so much more for us than we could have ever done for him. Eduardo has been an anchor for our team, providing us with motivation, laughter, and focus. He was a constant reminder to both players and coaches as to what high school sports is supposed to be about. The love for the game, the friendships, the common goals, and the mere ability to compete side by side together. Regardless of wins and losses, the tight-knit community that is a team both on and off the field is what matters most. This can sometimes be lost in the competitiveness of the sport, and Eduardo was always able to keep us all grounded. As for the team itself, Eduardo was able to bring out the best in players around him. His presence on the field and the friendships he made pushed each player to be the best that they could be, on and off. Many people may not notice this because of his upbeat and contagious personality, but Eduardo is one of the toughest and most determined young men that I have ever met. He has overcome so much in his lifetime already and takes on every one of life's challenges with determination and grit. After spending every day of the season with him, it was clear that he deserved the honor and recognition of being not only the heart of Putnam Valley football, but the heart of a giant. I would like to thank Sierra Gabriel, Mr. Mahoney, and Ms. Shuts for helping us show the community, the state, and the world what we get to see every day with Eduardo throughout the support and hard work creating his video entry. As soon as I nominated him for this award, I believe that the Giants saw exactly what we saw in Eduardo. Eduardo received the most ever votes for this award within the Giants' organization, as well as became the first manager to receive the award in its history of existence. Sierra Gabriel was able to document the entire behind-the-scenes experience, from the award presentation to his on-field game day experience, in this video.
All right, this is Sierra Gabriel, the athletic senior. We're on the bus, we're heading over to MetLife Stadium. Not sure if you can hear me right now, but we're really, really excited. We have just found out that Eduardo has won the Heart of a Giant Award, and this is a really, really big moment for PD, not just for PD, the whole entire, this is the nation that we're talking about. This is a really, really prestigious award, and we're so grateful for this opportunity for Eduardo. So here we are in the building at MetLife Stadium. This is Sierra Gabriel. You can see the Heart of a Giant sign in the background. That is literally all for Eduardo. We're so excited to be here. We have the rest of the team behind me. They're really, really excited and looking forward to what we'll see next. We're on the field. This is so, so exciting. Amazing stadium. You can see here on this side, we have the Heart of a Giant sign right here. Again, we're going to see Eduardo on Monday night with the Giants game versus the Packers. It's really, really amazing here. The boys are really, really excited, looking, Marcos, how do you feel right now?
I'm deep, dawg. I'm a, I'm a fan girl right now, but it's amazing, man.
What's up, guys? How you feeling right now? This is crazy.
How do you feel?
Awesome. I don't even know, man.
It's a, it's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. You're ready to go. To be able to see him go this far, out of hundreds of applicants, a lot of nominees, being able to go ahead and take on this big, big title as you are the Giants' 100th champion, how does that make you feel?
It makes, it makes me feel so proud of him. He deserves it. He's the number one person out of that entire pool deserves it after all the hard work and dedication he puts in. Just everything about him deserves it 100%.
He's always had to push, no matter what it is, with the simplest things, but he's been able to do it with no negativity. He always looks at the positives. He never complains, and he does it. Whatever he wants, he does, like my mom said in the video. Yeah, he knows, he's always going to do what it takes.
[Inaudible]
So, so, good weather, even though it's risky, just love to it.
I have a question to tell you, that you are this year's president of the Giants. You are a first-time top player, but as manager of the team, you have inspired everybody around you today. You're a teammate of all these people, and all of the, all of the things that you've gone through have been extremely inspirational to them, to me, to your family. To, to see you walk in here today and what you've gone through to get to that point inspired me.
Your, your energy, your enthusiasm, bringing guys together, sharing that personality, that smile, and showing up every day, day after day, another big thing that showed up with your teammates and with the coaches that are there every day, setting the standard, bringing the energy, showing that we're, we're being part of the team as well, so inspiring me for sure, and congratulations on the award.
We'd also like to give you tickets to the Super Bowl this year in Las Vegas.
SASS is doing his job, but here we are, my president, Trin, is right over here. Very, very excited. We're about to go to the Giants versus Packers game. We will see you later. This is Sierra Gabriel. We'll be getting on it. All right, we're here on the field, ready at the Giants game. Oh my gosh, my water already came out, I'm super excited. Probably can't hear me, but it's okay. How excited are we?
Yeah.
We're slowly closing down to see you today.
I would have to say it's a combination of Eduardo Rosinos and Sierra Gabriel.
Who are you, who are you sexy?
Saquon.
Saquon what?
Barkley.
Barkley.
All right, so it's almost time for pick on. We have 22 minutes left. Very, very, very exciting. Eduardo's waiting here. We're so proud of him once again. 22 minutes, we're about to come out, run under the gun.
You know, we are so happy with Eduardo, you know, it's the dream for Eduardo, and we are so, very proud for Eduardo.
Thanks, everybody, for the support, David, Eduardo, all the teachers, coaches, friends. Absolutely thanks for all of it. His, his support, our, our house, absolutely beautiful. Thank you, everybody.
So we have just wrapped up seeing Eduardo on the field. We have had amazing country support. There he is, the middle of the hour. So proud of him. Congratulations, Eduardo. We'll see you later. Sierra Gabriel, we'll be getting on it.
So a couple of quick thank yous before I invite Eduardo up real quick. First, I want to thank Sierra for the tremendous amount of effort that went into both the nomination video and producing that video. I know we teased her a little bit that she got to stay on the media side when Eduardo walked in, but little did we know it would turn into media credentials and an internship, but that's how impressive she was during the time that she's there. I also want to thank her for editing out the part where the security guard escorted our students off of the field. So that was, that was good editing right there. Point of note, don't ever give SASS a microphone again, because that was really loud. I do want to thank Eduardo's teammates. They were super excited throughout the event, I think maybe more so excited than he was, and I know it meant a lot to him that they were both there for the event and here this evening. To Eduardo himself, I told him to keep his speech under 10 minutes. He said, "I'm not talking," so that's definitely under the 10-minute threshold. While we were down there at MetLife Stadium, I'll never forget, I said, "Like, you have this audience here, you have members of the Giants, and you have members of their front office. What's, what's one thing that I could ask for on your behalf?" So he asked for, he kept it simple, he asked for a play to be named after him. So I had a conversation with Daniel Jones about naming a play after Eduardo, so if you ever hear an audible during the game, you might be yelling for the Eduardo special. I don't know what they're going to call it, but I did make that request on your behalf, so there may or may not be an Eduardo play in the Giants playbook now. All right, so we do want to quickly recognize you with a plaque. Eduardo, right in front of me. So I'll read it. "Putnam Valley Central School District proudly presents Pride in Putnam Valley to Eduardo Rosinos, the 2023 USA Football Heart of a Champion, Heart of a Giant Award winner. The school community recognizes your commitment, character, teamwork, will, and dedication. You lead by example, and you motivate your teammates to be the best they can be. You inspire others to work together to achieve a common goal, and have always persevered when faced with obstacles and adversities." Congratulations, Eduardo. Come on up.
Still not going to use that anymore.
Dr. Luft?
So I believe Dr. Dordy wants to say something?
I would like to say something. So I've known Eduardo since he's about three, and his family, but there are also a few other people in this audience that, that gave, that are very meaningful to Eduardo and his family. Ms. Boyle, Ms. John, Dr. Lucier, Ms. Broas, and most of all, his mom. I know his dad would have been here, but I have to say, as somebody who's worked for a district for a long time, his family has partnered with us for, for many, many years, and without that partnership, you know, Eduardo wouldn't be who he was. So kudos to his family for doing such an amazing job, and kudos to you, Eduardo, for all you've done and overcome. Thank you.
All right, so real quickly, we're going to move on, which will give you guys, I'm assuming you're staying for the rest of the meeting, the quick meeting presentation? Maybe, maybe not, all right. Again, congratulations to Eduardo. We couldn't be more proud of you and how you represent Putnam Valley in all that you do. Updated weather forecast, 65 and sunny tomorrow. Sorry to disappoint, and you guys all make sure you say happy birthday to Mrs. SASS on your way out. All right? Good night, guys. Do you want to sing?
Yeah.
She's got the talent, yeah, she does. I can see her. You know, the six o'clock minutes.
Okay, we're going to go on with our reports. Next on the agenda is a report from the Audit Committee Chairperson, who is Tom Sawyer. We finished our meeting at 6:30, so we told Tom he didn't have to wait around, so Jill is going to give his report.
Good evening. So I'm, I'm giving a report back on our external, our internal audit risk assessment. It was performed about a month ago, and out of those, out of that report comes a meeting with the Audit Committee, who met this evening and decided on the area of audit that would take place this year. So the specific area that will be audited will be extraclassroom activity funds, and the audit will begin in the late spring and be completed before the year end, and there'll be a report back at that time from the external, from the internal, I'm sorry, I keep saying, internal auditing firm Nugent and Hausler.
Thank you, Jill. Next, I'd like to open it up for the public to speak on any of the listed agenda items. Okay, so then we're going to move to the consent agenda. Number one, please.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through eight, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino?
The consent agenda includes approval of meeting minutes, CSE/CPSE placements, substitute listing amended, additional work hours for various staff members. We have two donations this evening to accept. A community member by the name of Erin Floto is donating a bookbinding machine, bindings, a paper cutter, long staplers, and a paper quilling kit. Also, the Hope for Youth Organization is donating $7,000 to fund the Middle School Homework Booster Lab. We're amending the appointment of the 2324 Middle School National Junior Honor Society Advisor, and we're approving various budget transfers.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. We're now going to go into presentations, and we're going to start with a 2024-25 budget presentation on curriculum and instruction.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite up Ms. Levine, who will be joined by our building principals, Mr. Mercardi, Mr. Mello, and Dr. Podesta. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Luft, and thank you to the Board of Education. It's my honor to not present this right now. Let me move into our presentation. One moment. Oh, here we are. Okay, and that was definitely a tough act to follow. I was worried I was going to be a little teary-eyed, but I held strong. But I'm really honored to be able to share our budget and the wonderful opportunities that lie ahead for our school district and each of our buildings and as a district, as well as some of our enrollment trends and information about our students. So let's dive in. Oh, I also want to take this opportunity to thank the principals for joining me on this presentation. They were all very excited to be participants in this, and they were instrumental in helping me form this presentation tonight, so kudos to them. Thank you all very much for your participation and your partnership always. As I often do, I want to start with the mission and vision of our school district. Grounding us in common language about our beliefs and our values is important. This year's goal is our goal of community, building a community of reflective learners, empowered educators, and engaged parents, all focused on making Putnam Valley a stronger school community. And our mission, the PVCSD, in partnership with our families and community, will ensure that all students are engaged in a challenging, student-focused educational program, understand and assume their responsibility for lifelong learning, work to achieve their personal best, and become productive citizens in a diverse, global society. And of course, our vision, the child first and foremost, we are always building a foundation for their future. We're talking a little bit about who are our Putnam Valley learners, to better understand what it is they need, which helps us all understand some of the initiatives we are launching and the purpose behind some of the things we're doing in our district. On the left-hand side, you're going to see the core values. Those core values were developed across our district in several ways. We reached out to all of our different stakeholder groups, students, parents, teachers, to narrow down to very specific values that we hold true here in Putnam Valley. And then along with the District Advisory Committee, that meets pretty regularly, we found that the data was telling us that these four first values that you see, community, opportunity, empowerment, and resiliency, those are the things we as a district really want to bring to our students in the effort to create empathic, courageous, reflective, and joyful learners. So those are how those two pieces connect. So we are creating the empowerment opportunities, the community opportunities, the opportunities for learning, and resiliency opportunities for our students, and then in turn, we hope that the empathic, courageous, reflective, and joyful learner will emerge as a Putnam Valley student. But we show this alongside our IB learner profile, because we never want to lose sight of this. This is a very important initiative for our middle school and our high school at this time, and we really, these are values we want for all of our students, attributes. We want all of our students to walk away from Putnam Valley with, we want them to be knowledgeable, we want them to be reflective, we want them to be enquirers. So these we hold near and dear to our heart, they are important to Putnam Valley. So these two pieces are important to understanding the Putnam Valley student, and these are the lenses through which we look through anything we do in our district, any program we adopt, any materials we purchase, any initiatives we're launching. We look through these as our lens, to make sure we are adhering to the things we want for our students. So I know my principals are going to join me a little bit for the enrollment data in each of their buildings, but I just wanted to start off with enrollment trends over the years. So you'll see that we have that one small cohort that's currently in fifth grade, and right now of our, across the grades, you'll see that the other grade that is showing a smaller below 100 for the first time in years is our kindergarten class of this year. We have seen a lot of students moving into the district, especially as of late, so I expect that that number may change even as soon as next year, but this is our current, the trends of our enrollment from October 19 to October 23. So to meet the needs of our students, obviously our district staffing does change year to year, but not significantly. We have a few small changes we're projecting for next year, and these are proposed staff positions. We're looking at a possible middle school counselor for our middle school. We have one right now, and we are looking to add a second to address the important mental health needs of all of our students in the middle school years. We know how important mental health is to our students. We know that there's been a trend in national news talking about the mental health issues our students have faced, especially coming off of the pandemic, and then also mixed in with social media and other issues that they face, global crises. So we know that our students are struggling, and we know that someone in that position could, in addition to Melody, could assist in supporting our students' needs. We also have seen some trends in increases in our teaching assistance, again, to meet the needs of the students that may be moving into the district or may be identified in our district as requiring additional support. And of course, some of these changes in our enrollment and in other pieces of our overall functioning as an organization leads to an increase in our office support staff, office and support staff, where we will be adding a full-time position that has been a part-time position historically. Any questions?
The full-time position, that's a combined?
It's, it was a part-time, so now we're just adding another .5 to make it a full-time.
Yeah, we would likely be looking to collapse two part-time positions into one full-time position.
Dr. Podesta, did you want to?
Hi, everyone. So just looking through the years to this year, 2023 to '24, and projecting into next year, we look at teachers and related services, and we look at our students. These numbers are taken on a common day in all our buildings, one day that we all decided on. However, right now, I know the elementary school has 583 students
However, right now, I know the elementary school has 583 students currently, with one more maybe coming in this week. So if you look at the '21 to '22 year, we had 530 students total. So since then, and this is post-pandemic even, we have about 50 more students in our building. So we seem to be growing at the moment. If you look at the projections for next year, there are a couple of things to consider. One is, we never know at this point how many kindergarten registrants we have. We're trying to advertise now all over the place on our sign and in our weekly word so that people do sign up for their kindergarten screening appointments. So right now, that's a guess for 100 students and five sections. Our Grade One is, would be our current kindergarten, which is not our largest cohort, looking at 97 students. Grade Two, 115. Grade Three, 103. Grade Four is the question mark that we discussed at the last board meeting I presented at, looking at about 128 students, which is not as large as our current fourth grade right now. But if we divided that group into five sections, it would look to be about 26 students per class. If we divided it into six sections, it would be less than that, of course, about 21 students per class. So people could continue to move in, move out. But right now, we just wanted to show those enrollment numbers and what the sections would look like.
Middle school.
Dr. Podesta? And Dr. Luff? The position that the COVID money covered a couple of years ago, is that included?
So those COVID, the three individuals we hired with the COVID money a few years ago have already been assimilated into what was existing staff members, either through retirements or additional sections.
Okay, good.
So we've actually hired teachers after them.
Okay.
So the, those originally hired with the COVID money have become, already been integrated into our general fund.
That bell has rung. So what we're looking at to make Grade Four, 21 per classroom, is an additional staff member?
So currently, Grade Four has six sections. So it would be maintaining those sections. If you remember back to last year, we had a vacancy at the middle school. We hired an individual as a one-year leave replacement as we waited to see how the sections worked out. So we could have hired her as a probationary teacher, but then we were at risk of then having to lay her off. So she understood what was, what we were asking and what was unknown at the time. Now, my hope is after, shortly after this presentation, we'll receive some guidance from the board as to how we want to handle those positions because that's how this individual know whether they'll be coming back next year or not.
And that, that position would keep us at six sections?
Yeah, I think ultimately what the decision is going to be when Travis goes to the middle school, that larger class in fourth grade is moving on to fifth grade, right? So there is one argument could be made to keep the six sections in fifth grade with that larger class, right, which would still maintain the existing staff members, but have six sections in fifth grade. There's a fairly large third grade class that's going into fourth. So there's an argument to be made that they would benefit from the six sections as well. So as we go through these two projections, you'll see what the six sections looks like in fourth grade, 21 versus 26. When Mr. Mercardi goes, you'll see what six sections would look like in fifth grade. And then ultimately, we'll have to make a decision regarding they both go to six, one goes to six, or whether they both stay at five because those are really all decisions that we'll have to make.
For the middle school, that would be an additional staff, correct? You would have to hire somebody for that if we go to six sections?
If we did both.
Only if we, if we did both.
Both, that's what I'm saying.
So existing staff members would allow us to have six sections in one of the two.
Right. So you would need an additional staff member to cover both?
If we wanted six sections in both grade levels, we would have to hire an additional staff member. And rehire our, our current teacher who we hired as a leave replacement.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luff. I think I'm all set. So let me talk about the middle school, and thank you for having us up here this evening. So as you can see, our projections of the middle school have gone down over the years a bit from 2021, 2022 at 486, and we are currently down to around 437. But as Dr. Podesta said, these numbers were taken from back in October. So we're actually slightly higher, as you'll see from the upcoming slide. But next year's projection is a little bit of a gain as we're going to see a large eighth-grade group go on to the high school. But we have a very large fourth-grade group coming over to fifth grade. So it's pretty much a wash. And then, of course, you all know that anomaly group will be in sixth grade next year at 84. So our staffing only has, hopefully, a change of one. We are looking to add a middle school counselor for consideration from the board. Since the pandemic, since we're in middle school, I know some of our students are here. If you remember middle school, it's a very changing time in your life. They actually say it's the second most changing time in a child's life from the age of birth through age two. The second most changing time in life is from age 11 through 14. So just imagine that change that middle schoolers are going through. They're trying to navigate the world around them and focus on academics at the same time. So an additional school counselor would help with career inventories, deal with the social, emotional ups and downs of middle school. We meet with all of our students with regards to academics. So we identify kids that are struggling after quarter one. We sit down with all of those kids who are struggling in more than one subject and set goals for them, and then meet with them again and over and over and over again throughout the year because we want plans in place for their success. And in addition to all that, we ask our school counselor to go into classrooms and provide lessons for these kids. So there's a lot in which Ms. Ortiz is pulled in different directions, and we believe that the addition of a school counselor will help to split that task and provide for more for our kids in their classrooms and those types of services. So that is our request, and thank you for listening to that request. So you'll see the middle school numbers. Really, that group, we're sending over about 137 kids to the high school. We're welcoming in 140. And as Dr. Luff had shared with you a little bit earlier, currently, we actually have four sections in fifth grade, which is, there's 84 kids. So four sections makes sense. Currently, I believe in fourth grade, they're at six sections. So if we were to continue with six sections in the middle school, we're looking at class sizes of 21. However, if we go to five sections, which would be one more than we have right now in fifth, we're looking at class sizes of 26 plus. I mean, that's, we usually see a few additional students throughout the year, give or take. So we're looking at 25, 26, maybe 27. We'll see what that looks like. But again, at five sections, we're looking at class sizes of 26. At six sections, you're looking at class sizes of 21. And as you can see, in grade six with that small group, four section gives us class sizes of 20. And then seventh and eighth grade, I know eighth grade's actually up to 112 as of today. They were at 111. They mirrored each other for a long, long time, and I couldn't believe it. I'm like, how is this, these, both classes at 111, but we're up to 112 in eighth. We're at five sections at both grade levels and class sizes of 21. So just know also that this does exclude our Achieve classes, which some of our students are pulled for those classes for certain content areas. So they might, you might have a group of 10 in an Achieve ELA class, but then a group of seven in an Achieve Science class. It all depends on the grade level. But this is a pretty accurate idea of where we're going to be for next year.
So just to emphasize that fact, these class sizes are really based upon average class sizes. And I just, the footnote is there because if someone does the math, you realize that 140 divided by five is not 26. But the reality is, is that some of those 140 go to Achieve classes and are therefore not calculated into what an average class size would be. So different students leave for different subject areas. So it's really just all based upon averages. But when this is posted on our website, I don't want someone critiquing our ability to teach math here in Putnam Valley because those numbers don't all add up.
How much of an impact would these additional positions hit on the budget? In other words, could we still stay under the cap having these positions? Because I think it's really important to keep our class sizes at 21. I had a conversation recently with a very good friend and said, you know, Putnam Valley is becoming like a private school. And I said, you know what? If we can have a private school, a true academy-style educational system in Putnam Valley at a public school price, I'd take that any day of the week. So I'm hoping, as long as our, our tax cap is not busted, that we are able to provide what is needed here. And I think 21 class size is just perfect, perfect for our kids and for our instructors.
So to answer your question, sort of, the first answer is it would have to, right? We would have to figure out how to budget for the position while remaining under the tax cap because otherwise it's not an option. Now, what expense it would come at?
That's what I'm talking about.
Or what would need to come out of our reserves to balance it? I think we would have to sort of wait until we complete the budget process to give you a more definite answer to that.
I just want to support what Sam said because thinking about the fact that 140 students are going to be in a critical transitional year. And being classes of 26 that may become 28 during the school year is a very scary thought for a fifth grader who's in a middle school, which is already a stretch for many of our families to think that fifth grade is a part of a middle school and all that comes with that experience. Putnam Valley Middle School does an excellent job of making sure that that transition is what it needs to be, but it is much harder at the expense of our teachers and our kids and our administration to have 26 kids in a class that again could be, potentially be 28. I would lobby the same for the fourth grade class. Fourth grade curriculum is no joke, and teachers have a lot of curriculum to cover in that year. It's another transitional year for students as they're getting ready for the middle school. So, you know, if I'm looking at this correctly, we're talking about two full positions to be able to add, keep the sixth section in fourth grade, to be able to add a section to the sixth grade. I'm sorry, to the fifth grade, and then the guidance counselor.
Right, the school counselor.
And so that would be two full positions, right, that we're looking at? I think every cent of that, in my opinion, would be worth it for our kids, and we just need to see how, how that might phase out in the budget.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Thank you.
Better spice yours up a little bit, Mello. Create some controversy here. Matt would like six sections of physics.
I don't think we're looking to do anything too crazy at the high school this year, but you know, one thing, you know, Mr. Oliver, you brought up, like somebody made a comment that this is a private, you know, it's almost like a private school. What a great testament to everything that we've done in this district, K-12. You know, for somebody to think that, you know, Putnam Valley resembles a private school at a public school, you know, public school education or expense, I think that's awesome. That says a lot about everything that, you know, the board, you know, our, our staff has been doing over the years. A lot of visionaries in there that have created these opportunities to provide those opportunities to our students. And I think our students get an incredible education here. So I'll, I'll own that, you know, throw that private school stuff far away. All right, so I know it looks like we're adding a teacher this upcoming year, but we actually, we're not able to hire a physics teacher last year. Our physics teacher left for another district, and we went through a hiring process and weren't able to find the right candidate. Luckily, we have Mrs. Lee Ludovici, who, you know, stepped into that physics position, and you know, you could talk to the students. I mean, you know, Mrs. Lee is, is an amazing teacher and, you know, very versatile. So was able to provide us with the best option for physics this year. I also want to, you know, throw out, you know, some kudos to Kat Westervelt, brand-new teacher for science research, who has a background in chemistry, stepped in to teach IB chemistry as well. So that versatility allowed us to get through this year, you know, noting that we just couldn't find the candidate that we wanted for that physics position. Jackie and I, we've been talking for a while about, you know, what are we going to do? And we actually have a candidate coming in for a demo lesson tomorrow. So we're really excited about a couple candidates that have applied already for our physics positions. And so we're not adding one. We lost a physics teacher because we couldn't hire a physics teacher that met our private school, public education, you know, mantra here. So this year, we'll be hiring a physics teacher so that we could get everybody back into the positions that they need to be in.
Kudos to you for not settling.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's got to be the right fit, right? It's got to be the right fit. I think that's really important. Oh, I, I thought I was going to talk about that on the next slide. All right. Because it's there, right? All right, good. I thought it, I thought it bit better here. But I could have talked, I could go back to the last slide if you wanted to. Anyway, yeah, you can see our, our high school projected enrollment for next year, relatively stable, but you know, here's the thing, you know, the influx of the Garrison students. This year, we have two ninth graders and one senior from Garrison in our school. And next year, the projection is 13, probably between 10 and 13, depending on if some of them go to a private school, not a public private school. Like, you know what? The appeal, though, is that Putnam Valley has that look and that those parents are making a really difficult decision in whether they're going to send their child to a very expensive private school or Putnam Valley. So it's not an easy decision for those families because of what Putnam Valley is and what we offer. So I think that's really great. It's, you know, there are 22 Garrison students, eighth graders, and 13 of them chose Putnam Valley. And this is only year two of students being able to come to Putnam Valley. Says a lot about what we do here at Putnam Valley. We had an IB information night, and it was pretty much loaded with Garrison parents that were trying to learn about what we're doing here. And it's one of those deciding factors in, in students coming here. Throw a lot of, you know, props out to Vindi Gregorio for putting on a really great presentation about what the IB program is and also allowing people to see, you know, who we are at Putnam Valley, like what some of the staff are like. And so I think the outside world is kind of seeing Putnam Valley and getting different perspective into who we are, what we do. And so it's, it's a proud moment for, I think, all of us to see, you know, what's happening here and why people think Putnam Valley is great. I think that's, that's all I, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'll just share because I know how important this is to our students and to our board, but our Career in Tech enrollment is 69 this year, up from 59.
Yeah, I, I was very pleased to see that, that the increase is, you know, ever-moving. These are great choices for many of our kids. The Tech Center is just a phenomenal institution, and the, the trades that they offer are, are, you know, first-class.
Absolutely.
I just had a young man that came over to my house to tune up some electrical stuff I have in my garage. And I had him as a former student. But he went through the Tech Center, and he is apprenticing as a full-time electrician, under a master electrician. But he'll get there, and he's making a lot of money. And I can attest to that because it costs me a lot of money to do the work I need to do. This is, this is terrific, and I'm glad our district supports the Tech Center as much as it does, and I hope to see this continue.
Well, I might be a little partial, but I can say we have an amazing Tech Center at PNW BOCES. They offer top-notch programs, and when I worked there, I used to walk through the Career in Tech Center all the time, stop in the Cosmetology Department, let them show me something new they learned. And it just, it really is such a great place for our students. There are so many wonderful opportunities. And being a cook myself, I happen to love to see how many students sign up for their culinary programs because between Tilly Foster Farm and the Culinary Program on campus, second to none. They're just really great programs. So very excited for all of our students to get to participate in these programs and walk away with a trade that they can do so much with. So, you know, you really love to see entrepreneurial students and, you know, that encouragement.
I agree. I love to see these numbers. I had a question kind of going over from last week's last meeting to this one. I know we approve a BOCES budget. When we send this volume of students, does, is there an additional fee per student? Or is that already included in the, the BOCES budget?
Is it a tuition per student, I believe? So I do believe each student is a certain amount of money. Or I just don't know if the, it depends on the actual?
Yeah, it depends on how many sessions they take. But yes, it is individ, it's individualized depending on each student's program.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Jackie, can I just ask, are these numbers reflected in the total district numbers on the previous slide that was colored? And so like that 1493, are those numbers in there?
Yeah, because the students still attend Putnam Valley for part of the day. They do their core classes here and then they either do a morning, midday, or afternoon session at Bosse's. But each of them is here in school for at least part of the day.
Okay, thank you for that. The reason why I ask is because I, I might be looking at this incorrectly, but it's just a question. It seems like elementary enrollment is going up, but district enrollment overall is going down. So I don't, I don't know what's happening there because that mathematical equation doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think what we're seeing, this is actually a perfect slide for it. What we're seeing is an overall trend of smaller classes, right? So the classes, the incoming kindergarten classes of 100 students is not the same as the graduating class of, we've had 150, 160 kids graduate. So that leads to the overall decline in enrollment. The other thing that we do see is where we used to sort of have the equal number of students leave Putnam Valley versus enter Putnam Valley. That trend is one where we continue to see it grow. So talk, I know we like to talk about how proud we are of what we were able to do during COVID. But if you look at the kindergarten class of 1920, right? So the students that were here for half a year, that class that we're now discussing about going into fifth grade at 140, started at 110 kids. So that class gained 30 students from the time they were in kindergarten through fourth grade. If you look at the class that started the beginning of 2021 school year in the midst of COVID, right? 112 students enrolled in kindergarten. That class has already grown to 131 students in third grade. So those two classes that we already spoke about, you see a tremendous influx of students moving into Putnam Valley. Whereas the overall enrollment trend that we see is really more so based upon live births, right? So the birth rate, the number of homeowners that are giving birth in Putnam Valley. So that's obviously far out of our control, right? Lots of families who have already raised their kids and their kids have moved on, but still own homes in Putnam Valley, aren't contributing to the school district. Anytime a house hits the market or a rental hits the market, we see an influx of registrations. And I think that's what you see here on these charts in terms of grade levels gaining students over the years. Because as soon as a property opens up, we see more and more young families moving in to take advantage of our schools. So I think it'll take time, but if we continue to see growth in our grade levels, we're going to reverse that trend and start to see increasing enrollment again.
Thank you. So just to review, these are the staffing changes we anticipate seeing this year. Matt spoke to the physics position, but we also have a music teacher retiring. Ms. Calhoun will be retiring at the end of the year. So that's just replacing the music teacher. And then we also have Phyllis Conlon retiring as well at the end of this year. And so we are replacing her with a math teacher. Additional staffing potentials are the school counselor we mentioned earlier, a potential special education change that Natalie will speak to, I believe, in her presentation. And the office assistant position we spoke of, the part-time, two part-time positions becoming a full-time. So this is a perfect slide to share this information. But I am so happy to hear that comment about private school because having worked in a private school for the beginning of my career about six or seven years, I can say Putnam Valley is actually better than a private school. And I've worked in at least two private schools, three in our area, actually. So I can tell you that the opportunities our students have here actually go above and beyond a lot of what private schools have to offer when you consider our amazing special education program, the opportunity to attend career and tech programs. I mean, we offer so much more in Putnam Valley. Our international baccalaureate program is not something many private schools have adopted, although it is typically heard of in private school settings. But in our area, you don't see that a lot in our local private schools. So I would actually venture to say that we offer more than the local private school. So you can share that with the person. Before Margaret comes up, she's going to share a little bit about the elementary initiatives. I just want to preface this slide with how much, how hard all of our teachers work. But the program, the scholastic program our elementary teachers have taken on has been so much hard work, good work that has gone into this. And we got to witness this last night in a beautiful literacy presentation, a K-2 literacy presentation that our teachers put on alongside Margaret and Carly Roby, our newest assistant principal. And just the fluency with which they spoke of what they know about our program that we've, this is technically year one. Last year was year zero, this is year one. So we've really only been doing this program a year and a half. But between the guided reading work that they shared about, the station work they shared, and of course, combined with our wonderful foundations work, they made it so clear how ahead of the game we are in Putnam Valley when it comes to the science of reading and how we continue to learn and to grow in this area. But I want to turn it over now to Margaret, our literacy expert principal, to come on up and share all the wonderful things that the elementary school is up to.
Thank you, and thank you to those of you who were able to attend. I know it was a busy night last night in the district. But the teachers blew me away, actually, because we had organized it and then I heard them at the microphone and I said, we have a building filled with experts. And you just kind of sit back and say how fortunate our children are. We take this literacy work so seriously. And Jackie and I just attended a New York State briefing on the science of reading and just all of the components that are so important to our young learners. And we're working so hard at it. It's not that we've reached the ultimate point of we know everything, not at all. In fact, that's not where we are. We are learning every day, learning from our students and learning from each other. But we've come a long way in a year and I am very thankful. So again, our initiative begins with the scholastic literacy implementation along with foundations, along with what we're learning about the science of reading, and of course, preparing our students to be readers and writers throughout the years as they head toward middle school and to our high school IB program as well. We have our science work that we've been working so hard on this year. The state asked us to provide new investigations as part of assessments. I thank all of our third and fourth grade teachers. I thank Mrs. Bros, who helps so very much and so consistently in our science lab. This is a big undertaking in our schools this year. And a lot of schools were kind of caught off guard, like what, wait, what are they asking? And how do we document it? And how do we make sure these investigations happen? So thanks to Mrs. Bros, our teachers, our leadership, we weren't caught off guard and we continue to figure all of this out, working closely, of course, with the middle school leadership. The writing expectations and our writing committee is a big focus this year. Looking for accountability, listening to what we're learning about the science of reading and writing in response to text, writing with text, interacting with text, and making sure that that influences our writing. It doesn't mean that it's all nonfiction and research writing. In fact, it's not. There's a wide range of what we want our young writers to be able to do. But we are looking at our continuum of expectations and benchmarks. And this begins in our elementary school. But I know that Jackie's working with a K-12 committee as well soon. And we're going to look at the K-12 continuum. And we take this very seriously, this work. This is our next number-one focus, I'm sure. Along with the reading and writing, we have phonemic awareness training. The foundations and Wilson continues to be a focus. And we have a teacher, Teresa Bork, who's trained to be our foundations coach. She spoke beautifully last night. She has taken this on in a big way. And the phonics and word study is very stressed in our classrooms. Hegarty is a new focus for us where foundations has the phonics, sounds, and letter and word work. It doesn't have phonemic awareness. All of that rhyming and breaking words apart, chunking words, that comes with looking at how we can teach reading and not leave that part out. Very important. And so we're sending teachers from K-1 and 2, a representative, to go to a workshop and come back and turnkey just that little part of it so that we can begin to understand even more about it. We are looking at CBT, computer-based testing preparation. We know that's coming our way. This year, our students will take paper and pencil tests again in third and fourth grade for ELA and math. But if they are given field tests as they were last year, they again will be computerized. Of course, our students take I-Ready exams on the computer. They have digital components to a lot of what they do during the day. It doesn't make up the majority of the day, but it's not foreign to them. They're quite comfortable with it. A big focus for the past few years has been our RTI process in Tier 1. This goes along under the MTSS umbrella. Our RTI process has been fine-tuned through last year. I worked closely with Mrs. Pico and now this year with Mrs. Roby. But we have an RTI team, a very small condensed team that meets once a week with teachers who refer students for discussion. We have taken a very close look at what Tier 1 interventions look like in the classroom. We have developed a bank of Tier 1 interventions so that teachers can refer to it, add to it, decide what works for them and those students and their needs. So this is important work. This is actually the heart of what we do because we want to give students what they need as learners. So this has been taken on very seriously. Our teachers come to these RTI meetings with data, with interventions, with progress monitoring. It's not just, this is how I feel. It's, it's, look at this. I have things to prove to you after putting interventions in place. So it's quite scientific and research-based and I'm so proud of this work. And I can't say enough about our Math Eureka program. Our students do so well, their understanding of numbers and number sense and the work our teachers have done from the beginning of grasping that program, especially with the outstanding professional development we had throughout the year when we took that program on. We ourselves have become stronger math thinkers and problem solvers and our students are showing us that it's very successful. So those are our main initiatives. Busy every day, that's what we say. And does anybody have any questions about those? Okay.
Outstanding work, really amazing.
I mean, just to see the recipe of literacy that you are providing kids every day to know and understand that one program is not the silver bullet, but to take the best pieces of what we know works, what research says works when it comes to phonemic awareness and the pillars of reading, right? All of those pieces matter. And there is never going to be one program that has all of those pieces for every student. And so being able to form that recipe along with your MTSS work and your RTI work to be able to kind of give kids a little bit more in this area if they need it or a little bit less is just outstanding. So great job, continue the great work that you're doing.
Thank you. And, you know, working with our outstanding teachers, seeing what different grade levels need at different times. We continue on this journey, but thank you very much.
Onto our amazing middle school. And once again, I want to say just how proud I am of the work of our middle school in the heavy lift that is adopting an IB program. All of our teachers have written units for their NYPD work as of December. We're using a platform title to do that. And I also just want to say how incredibly proud I am of our two coordinators and our building leaders for the instructional leadership they've done. I want to give a nod to Mary Kay Cohen and to Stephanie Tricalla for leading this work as the NYPD coordinators in this building. They have been fantastic. They, as soon as they were tapped as our coordinators, they put their nose to the grindstone and they have moved that building in ways that I wish I could show it to you. And I can't wait to bring them up here and have them present to all of you because they will by the end of the year, I'm sure. But they are just phenomenal new leaders, teacher leaders, and I can't say enough great things about them. But I also can't say enough great things about Travis and Jamie and the work that they've done to lead this initiative, to lead this work, and to also lead the data-driven instruction and small group work that we are seeing happen more and more in the middle school, which we know how important that is. So I'm going to turn it over to Travis, but I just wanted to give that nod to the middle school and how hard they've worked, so.
Thank you, Jackie. And I'd also like to recognize Mary Kay and Stephanie for all the work that they've done. We actually meet with them weekly. They meet with our entire staff every week. So we debrief with them on occasion with Dr. Luft and with Jackie. And it's amazing, some of the discussions we have about working with our staff. And, you know, the fact that every single one of our staff members in the middle school was able to write their unit by the end of December is just a huge step in the right direction. And we have our consultant, Mac, who's going to be visiting us for two days in March. She's going to actually come in, she's going to watch our students in action, talk to all of our adults and administration, and she's going to give us feedback because we want to be moving in the right direction with all that we do. And her feedback is going to help prepare us for accreditation, which will be next December. So they will come in and look at what we do at that time as well. So just so you're aware, once the units are written, now our staff is in the process of eventually implementing that. Some of our staff members will be implementing those units this spring. A lot of them will be implementing them next September, October, November. And then once you, you know, have your units, you then reflect and revise. And that's the really nitty-gritty part of the process where we really learn the most, I feel. So we're asking our staff to be risk-takers. And that's huge because when you're not used to doing something that's new, you're really taking that risk and it's uncomfortable in a way. And we want to encourage them to be uncomfortable and it's okay to reflect and grow because that's when we grow the most. So kudos to our middle school staff. They've been tremendous in this process. Speaking a little bit about our Math 7 and 8, I'd like to first start off with our 5, 6 program. So some of you may or may not know, we actually use Eureka Math in 5th and 6th grade. And we've had great results over the last few years. We're actually using Eureka Squared right now in 6th grade. And they were all set to dive in. There's more visuals, there's more space to work and write. And our staff was able to adapt what they do and grow with Eureka Squared. And we've heard great things from the 6th grade thus far. We're currently in 7th and 8th grade looking at other programs. We want to kind of adopt a program that's consistent in 7th and 8th grade. We actually had a company come in today and present to us. We have a company coming in in a couple of weeks. And with Phyllis Conlon retiring, I mean, she has been tremendous and has a wealth of knowledge. We're going to have somebody new stepping into her shoes. And we, we have a newer math team. We have a new teacher who's in 7th grade, this is his first year, and Mr. Jack Borman. So we want to make sure that we have the resources available for these newer teachers so that they can use online resources, they can use consumable workbooks. A lot of the materials now are in other languages, so that's tremendous for us as well. So we want to have those resources and we want to make informed decisions. And Jackie has been right at the forefront of helping us invite in these companies and have them present and for us to make the right decision moving forward so that we see some more consistency across our 7th and 8th grade levels. And of course, as some are aware, Phyllis teaches Algebra 1, two sections as well.
Travis, Eureka doesn't go to 7? I'm just wondering whether, I'm sorry.
It's okay. They're actually one of the companies that we're inviting to come in. They're, I don't want to speak for the company, but we wanted to see what they offer in 7th and 8th grade. And we actually did find out most recently that they don't have resources yet for Algebra 1, but they are in the process of doing that. So we just want to make an informed decision before we decide to go with something that might not be as developed for our 7th and 8th grade as is for our lower elementary, middle to lower elementary.
Does math change at that point in the 7th and 8th grade?
It becomes more complicated. And we have sections where we advance the kids. And then we have Algebra 1, which is a high school course. So they are different from what we see in a typical Math 7 class or a Math 8 class. So we just want to make sure we make a very good informed decision because these programs come at a cost. And we want to make sure that they're the right, they're right for us. And these standards, they keep changing. And I tell you, like, Jackie, do you want to talk about some of the standard conversation we had today?
So I just wanted to clarify something because Eureka was the program that came in today and they did share Eureka Squared. But what Eureka Squared, what Eureka's done, let me call them Great Minds because that's the company, right? Eureka's the program, but Great Minds is the company. What Great Minds did was they said, okay, we have Eureka Squared, which provides more visuals, simplifies the language, and is aligned to the Common Core standards. New York State said, no, we want New York State aligned, next-gen aligned. So Eureka does have Eureka Squared Algebra, but they have recently developed Eureka Squared New York State aligned. Squared New York State aligned. So the Seventh and Eighth is ready and their digital platforms will be ready as of the summer. So we can access that curriculum. Algebra will be ready, I think, later in the summer. So Algebra One, New York State aligned is not ready, but we do have Algebra One Eureka Squared, which when you look at the Next Gen standards versus the Common Core standards, they didn't change all that much. Um, there are a few changes and there are a few, um, what I'll say, uh, timing is different. You know, they might do this lesson earlier or this lesson later in another year or another unit. That, those are the changes. They're small, but they have crosswalks to kind of show, you know, where that, you know, where those changes are so that the teacher can plan for that. But those materials will be ready eventually. It's just that they just, they have gone through this process to develop a New York State aligned Eureka Squared. So when you hear Eureka Squared right now, their New York State aligned program is not fully prepared. What I will say is that no program takes the place of a strong repertoire for a teacher. Teachers have to develop a very deep repertoire of strategies and, um, instructional moves that they apply to the areas of learning, um, depending, they match depending on the students and the situation they have in front of them. That is what skillful teachers do. The materials and resources are to help teachers who are newer and don't have that deep repertoire, like someone like Phyllis Conlon, who has a very deep repertoire and has, you know, developed a lot of strategies and a lot of supports and a lot of materials over the year. So when we talk about adopting a program, it's not a, it's not the game changer that's going to fix everything. It's resources and materials that are going to guide our teachers, especially our newer ones, and create consistency and common language throughout our buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to echo what Jackie said, these materials do not replace a good teacher. So we want to make sure that we provide our new teachers with these resources and our veteran teachers. Um, so moving on to science, um, we've seen some great changes in science. As, um, Dr. Podesta had mentioned with the elementary school, um, we've been sending our Fifth Grade teachers for Science 21 training for a couple of years now. And in addition, what the state has asked us to do is to implement these science investigations, which they suggest we spread over the course of a number of years. However, when they asked us to do this, they also failed to mention that this is the first year of our science assessment that we've been waiting for, for many years. And they said, well, part of this assessment is these investigations. So now we've asked our Fifth Grade teachers, thank you, to implement these four science investigations on top of what they already teach. So we had to kind of go out and provide them with the materials, um, to purchase and then ask them on top of what they already teach to have these four investigations, which are very time-consuming. Don't get me wrong, they're tremendous, they're hands-on, the kids are actively engaged, the teachers facilitate them, but on top of that, they also have to grade these investigations and we have to store them. So any children that transfer from school to school, we need to ask their prior school if they took their investigations, which they have to hold for a year and a half, I believe, or two years. And then we have to collect those investigations so that there's a paper trail. So all of this follows our students. And mind you, it's not just our Fifth Graders, but we're also now asking our Eighth Grade Science teachers to do the same exact thing. So our Eighth Grade Science teachers have to take, have our students take four investigations there as well this year. And then they need to hold on to those investigations and essentially their labs and they're very hands-on. We have to hold on to that data, um, for our students. But eventually our rollout process will be, hopefully, seeing those investigations start in Third Grade and Fourth Grade and then Fifth.
I'm sorry.
Which they'll take, they'll take the assessment in Fifth Grade and then we'll ask our Sixth Grade teachers and our Seventh Grade teachers, as well as our Eighth Grade teachers, to do those investigations and...
Has anybody asked the state, you know, exactly what are you doing? Having an assessment based upon investigations that nobody has ever done before? I mean, that's so ludicrous.
Sure.
Well, I could stay with a hundred percent accuracy that Ms. Levine has contacted the state because I got a phone call from the state, um, asking for follow-up based upon Mrs. Levine's, uh, inquiry. So go ahead.
Call him back.
It's absolutely insane. Really.
It, it is. And one, one of the parts of my lengthy letter to the state included a plea to phase these in as opposed to just kind of dropping them all.
Exactly.
Since we weren't even given the actual investigations to examine and prepare for until last year. And it wasn't enough time for us to actually put anything in place. So yes, our Fifth Grade teachers actually had to do them all this year. And not to mention the costs involved. We've had to buy materials of these kits that are sold by another Bosse's upstate. Our own Science 21 doesn't develop these kits. So we had to buy the kits. We had to train the teachers. We had to give teachers time over the summer and release time just to plan for these, to prepare for them. Our Fifth Grade teachers spent time over the summer creating benchmarks just to know where to begin with students in terms of their science understanding. And there was just so much work that went into these investigations and, and they're going all the way through. Uh, you know, one of the things I'll add later is about high school and the earth, earth and space science and biology that now have to also have investigations. So, you know, they're adding these. It's not that it's not worthwhile learning. Um, personally, I think we have Science 21 here and if Science 21 happened to go up to Eighth Grade, I would say we don't have need for these because the work that David Jacob at PNW Bosse's has done is so intricate, so thoughtful, meticulous work. I should know, I was in the office next to him and I used to watch him write and, and, you know, really struggle with developing the right, um, hands-on activities to go with all of these standards that had come out from the state. So, um, we have that. We pay for that. We have kits that come to our buildings that our teachers use and Liz Bros uses. And for, for the state to just drop these investigations on us on top of what we already do.
Already do.
And we already pay for. And we already train our teachers in. We had to do all this extra work in order to prepare for these investigations.
Travis, God bless you and your staff. I mean that, to be able to deal with the knuckleheads up in Albany. I, I am always frustrated by their dictates and their decrees. Good job. Good job. Kudos to, to the middle school.
Thank you. And again, unfunded state mandates, right? And, you know, I have to applaud our Fifth and Eighth Grade teachers, um, for the tremendous work that they've done this year. They're already super hardworking and to see them stress over these investigations, it's like, I know, how do I help you? And the answer is always more time, um, which we're already, you know, tight on time. So thank you to our, um, Eighth Grade Science teachers, Fifth Grade Science teachers, and to all of our Science teachers in district that will adopt these investigations and take part in the process. Because here's the thing. This is our first year doing this science assessment.
Right.
And I say doing, our kids have been waiting for this, these science assessments for years. So now to have this on top of it, and by the way, these investigations are fifteen percent of the entire assessment.
Yeah.
And it's about the process. They don't necessarily have to remember what they do in these investigations. It's just the process of doing it, which is what life is about, right? We want to teach them about the process, not always about the content, because they can Google a lot of that information. But they have to know how to be scientists and they have to be able to look at several pieces of data and come up with theories and conclusions. And, you know, I'm not going to speak as if I'm teaching the Fifth Grade Science or the Eighth Grade Science, but again, they're working tremendously hard on this work. And by the way, we talk about CBT rollout. These science assessments are all on their laptops.
On their laptops.
So all these investigations are hands-on. Science is hands-on. And then we ask to assess them over their laptops. It's kind of ironic.
It, it, it's what you said, Dr. Levine, that, that, uh, it would be fine if they phased it in. They did it properly instead of dropping like a ton of cement right on top of us. Uh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. A good topic to roll us into our CBT rollout. So this is our computer A testing rollout and we're going to start to see that actually this week, even though we've had a kind of off and on week with the snow keeps interrupting us for some reason. But, um, you know, so, um, you know, our teachers are doing these, um, investigations in science and now we're doing these simulations with computer-based testing. So this week and next week, our Fifth Graders in Math, Science, and ELA are practicing simulations. So they're on their laptops. They have tools that they maneuver with and they're, they're taking, I believe it's twenty to thirty questions, might be ten to twenty, um, for a length of twenty minutes to about a half an hour. And the teachers are devoting their time so that they're looking over their student shoulders, seeing what they're doing on their laptops, and the kids are getting comfortable with this computer-based testing. We're lucky. Our kids have had laptops in their hands for years, but it's like any new program. You have to get comfortable with it so that when you sit down to take it, we're ready for all those little things that can go wrong with technology. And our tech department is second to none. Um, you know, they have to prepare all of these devices so that they can't go on anything else. When you start that, um, simulation, that's all you can focus on. You can't go to the internet. And when kids need to pause to use the restroom or take a break, they actually get logged out and then they need a code to log back in. So we're getting our Fifth Graders and our Eighth Graders, who will be taking these all computer-based, ready through these simulations. These aren't field tests. These are simulations. They're practice to get them ready. And then, of course, in the spring, we have a whole different rollout of what the computer-based testing will look like because we have windows. And what we tried to do is move our window as far back as we can so we get as many days to prepare them before they take this assessment. I apologize to those Eighth Grade students going to Washington DC. They're taking their science tests that Monday and Tuesday before we take off for DC on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So it was as far back as we could move it. But, um, you know, we have to be very thoughtful of when we have our kids take these assessments so that they're fully prepared and they're comfortable with taking them on these devices. And you know what? Five years from now, we're going to say, oh yeah, I remember when we took those simulations because certain districts have done this for years. Like I know local districts who have done the computer-based testing because they just all moved on it right away. We've kind of paused on that until now. And now the state's saying, no, you have no choice. You have to move to this. And the whole middle school and elementary school will be transitioned in two more years. Um,
Totally.
They're rolling it out. They're actually rolling this out in a very thoughtful way, um, which makes sense in that area.
Good for them for that.
So, um, a final bullet point, uh, data-driven instruction. Um, just so you're all aware, in a couple of weeks, um, our students will be taking their mid-year iReady, um, benchmark assessments. And we have people coming in, um, who will be going over the data with our staff members. Um, so we're going to look at the growth from September through February and we're going to celebrate the process and we're going to work with our teachers, um, to look at how our students have grown and then to be able to assign and work with those results to have our students even grow more because iReady is just one way that we look at growth. We also look at our state assessments. We also look at our in-class assessments. So we're looking at data all the time and you never know what impacts our students on any given day. Um, I know that our Eighth Graders taking the Algebra Regents, they're working really hard. Um, and we've seen an increase in the amount of students in the middle school who have actually sat to take these assessments. And we appreciate that because it gives us good data to go off of. And I always say, if it's provided for us, it can only help to better prepare our kids for more high-stakes assessments that they'll take at the high school level. And that's a whole nother story when Matt gets up here talking about the data that they collect and those changing assessments at the high school level. So, um, a lot of work happening at the middle school and, uh, kudos to our teachers and thank you to all of our families and students. This, and I'll say it again and again, has felt like the most normal year that I can say in several years. The kids have been tremendous. Um, they're focused, they're engaged, they're thoughtful, they're kind. Um, this was no name-calling week, even though it's been very short for us. But the middle school kids, um, I'm very thankful for the way that they've rolled out this year and look forward to the end of the year next.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you. And thank your staff for dealing with this craziness.
Before we move on, I just want to highlight that piece, um, go back to it, about the data-driven instruction and those targeted small group work. There is no replacement for explicit direct instruction to students.
That's right.
We need more of that and we are seeing our teachers rise to the occasion and do more of that in our middle school, which is fantastic. And we're going to continue to see more of that. But it is informed by our data. So we're very lucky to have our partners at iReady able to come in and show them how to better utilize the iReady tool and, um, how they can, you know, really pull as much data as possible from that. So before Matt comes up here, I just want to paint a picture for you of something that I was able to participate in today that really, I think, captures what the high school has been working toward all this time. Carrie Dusiana, an English teacher and chair of our English department at the high school, um, invited several of us today to come to Hamlet on Trial. She teaches a criminal law class, but she's also an English teacher. And she also had Kat Shuts and Dan Mahoney bring our film students in to film the occasion. So here we had this interdisciplinary moment of three different subject areas, criminal law, ELA, and film, all in the same space, interacting, role-playing, experiential learning. It was so moving and so exciting to see. I was really grateful to be invited to that. But if you saw the high school band concert last night and the tango that was performed in addition to Charles singing with the band, I mean, the things that are happening at the high school are so amazing and I have to attribute it to the amazing leadership of Matt and Letitia. They work so hard every day. They are so committed and dedicated to their students and to their families, from their tiger streak to their tiger's keepers. And also just having everyone's voice. I know he has his Vision Quest meetings. He may touch on that today, but I know he talked about it at his opening day, um, presentation. And I, I can't say enough about the partnership that I feel like I have with Matt and Letitia and the work in the high school. Um, we are just so proud of everything our high school is doing. So Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to take credit for that, but it's just an incredible staff at the high school. And like, if you give them the latitude, you know, if you give them the freedom to kind of create, they come up with the things that, uh, you know, Jackie was talking about, that she saw today and last night and all that. Um, and I think that's really what it is. That's all I do, right? I'm here to support them, um, so that they can do what they do really well. And, uh, I'm really proud of the staff at the high school. Uh, you know, unfortunately, because of the Hamlet being on trial, nobody was able to do any test prep, uh, during all that. You know, it's, you know, kind of disappointing that they didn't get to work on their computerized testing at that moment. Uh, but anyway, I, I think we are doing a lot of really great things at the high school and a couple of things that we're looking to do. Uh, and a lot of this comes out of, like Jackie said, of Vision Quest meetings. Uh, you know, basically, uh, we've been meeting with one mixed group of staff members. It's, uh, not just teachers, it's, uh, teaching assistants, monitors, custodians. We invite everybody, um, you know, the office staff. We invite everybody to those meetings. Uh, you know, basically there's about ten, ten members at each meeting with Letitia and I, mixed group. Uh, and we kind of just, we, you know, we ask them, uh, you know, what, what do you think is the most, you know, challenging things for students today, right? And, uh, and then we try and develop from there what we can do to probably meet the needs, uh, you know, moving forward. So, uh, you know, the Vision Quest is eye-opening, uh, because you're getting a really good voice. And then, uh, she mentioned we have these tiger streak meetings, um, with the students, a group of students that we bring in there. Um, these students are identified by, uh, teachers as being people with leading, leadership potential. Um, and we were able to bring them in there and, uh, you know, they provide a lot of incredible feedback for us that allows us to make adjustments to the school, uh, to better meet their needs because we're here for the students, right? Child first and foremost. So I can have the most brilliant idea, uh, in my mind, but if it's not what's going to work for students, um, then, then what's the point? And I'll just give the students credit with this is one of the things. Yeah, you always hear like, um, you know, parents always talking about, oh, my kid comes home, they never talk to me. My kid comes home, they don't talk to me, you know? Uh, and I thought it was really interesting because, uh, connected messages go home to parents. They don't share those with the children. And so the children, the, the, you know, students are in there and they're going like, I, you know, they, they don't talk to us. They get these messages from the school and they don't talk to us. It's really interesting how it goes both ways. So, you know, from that, from the students, we realize that, you know, we're going to send a connected message home, which goes to the parents. Um, we need to send that message to the students as well. So they need to hear that. And so that's the feedback that we got from the students that's making us better. Uh, I know this isn't about, you know, those things. It's about, uh, you know, different initiatives, but those are some of the initiatives we've put in place this year that we plan on continuing, uh, you know, for the years to come. It's just, it's vital feedback and, and I think that's what helps shape what we do here at Putna Valley. Uh, for next year. It's just, it's vital feedback and, and I think that's what helps shape what we do here at Putnam Valley uh for next year. Uh, we, we're in the process of our five-year evaluation for IB. So we became a diploma program five years ago, uh, and therefore every five years, IB requires uh an evaluation. And really, it's, it's, it meets those IB learner profile um aspects there. And uh, it causes us as an IB school to reflect on what we're doing. And look at the changes and be able to articulate how we've changed and, and done things um differently because of IB. Uh, and then, uh, you know, and not just as teachers, but even as a district. I know Dr. Luft is meeting with Mr. DiWigore the other day, um, you know, talking about a bunch of different things that. As, as a, as a district, we need to get together on and demonstrate to IB um that we've reflected on a whole bunch of different things. And we'll have to bring a parent group together for this, we need to bring a student group together, and we're gonna use our tiger streak as our student group. Um, to evaluate some of the things that we're doing with IB. Um, and, you know, we're looking for real valuable, genuine feedback. Um, you know, it's not one of those things where you go, uh, we need to shy away from this feedback, we need to embrace that feedback. We need to make the changes that uh are gonna make us better moving forward. So the five-year evaluation i- is quite a process. It's not just to check a couple of boxes and send it into IB. Um, there'll actually be another visit from uh IB, I think, in September. Uh, you know, so they'll send uh a delegate or two here to meet with us and uh help us reflect on, on what we're doing with IB. Uh, so we're looking forward to that because again, it causes everybody to reflect on what they're doing. Um, and, you know, that's that inward kind of reflection that we want, uh, to make sure that we're doing what's best for students. Uh, also, next year, uh, we're looking to, we're calling a tenth period. Basically, what we're looking to do is from two forty to three twenty, create this period of time where sports doesn't start. Um, I've talked to Mr. Cantrowitz, uh, I've talked to Dr. Luft, there's been a whole bunch of conversations. Uh, Dr. Doertie, we talked about this because there's other implications that come along with it. Uh, but, you know, it really, it's, it's a joint effort. I know, uh, Travis was part of the conversations as well because it could affect middle school. Um, you know, there's a lot of moving parts of that. But the realization that we got from our teachers and our students is that it would be nice to have this chunk of time after school. Uh, where they could go for extra help, they could go to clubs, they could, uh, um, we could actually create writing labs and math labs after school. That um students could attend when they need help. Um, students could be used in those writing labs and math labs, those honor students, to be able to, they'll be trained. And they'll be able to help students that are coming in for, for that uh, extra help in any of those areas. So, uh, we're excited about that, but there's a, you know, there's a lot of moving parts when you talk about trying to create that time after school. And one of the biggest issues is obviously busing. Uh, you know, like, so if we have this time till three twenty, um, we're looking with, you know, working with Dave Spittle. Um, you know, and Mike Koenig to see what we can do to possibly adjust some busing, to have some, some loop buses to get students home at that time. Uh, so there's a lot of moving parts, we're hoping that it comes to fruition, but it's definitely one of those things that we're working on. Uh, to just add a better connection after school, give more opportunities for students, uh, for the uh, clubs, activities, and extra help that they need. Uh, and there's some other unique things that we're trying to look at there. Um, as far as like, uh, physical education classes, uh, you know, there might be cohorts of students that. Uh, aren't comfortable in your typical physical education class. And we might be able to create a smaller class for them in that time period that uh would be, you know, beneficial for them. So they can be successful and, um, you know, e- enjoy the merits of a physical education uh class as well. And then, uh, the other thing that we're doing is we're beginning like, uh, that feasibility, uh, you know, study into NYPD. We actually sent a group out to Harrison High School. Um, you know, they came back with some really good feedback because NYPD at the high school, you know, in the middle school, it works, you know, it's grade level. Um, you have these grade-level teams that are meeting together uh for NYPD. High school isn't set up in grade levels, we're set up uh by, uh, you know, departments. So it becomes, you know, different kinds of shifts that we're trying to understand and see if that will work in the high school. Uh, so, uh, we're taking our time, we're hoping to visit Somers High School, we're hoping to visit uh Pelham High School. Uh, you know, some of these high schools that have NYPD to see what they're doing, how it works, and then how we might be able to incorporate it uh here at the high school. So, uh, that's uh basically what we're looking for for next year. Um, you know, uh, among, you know, other things, but I think that's, that's it. Any questions?
Matt, the tenth period, is that gonna be scheduled or on a volunteer basis? Or what does that do for contractual obligations for a teacher?
Uh, so, uh, you know, in my discussions with, with Dr. Luft, it, it's volunteer basis. So, uh, you know, right now, we have teachers that are staying after, giving extra help. Uh, if you look at, at, you know, our math teachers during lunch, there's kids always in their classes, you know, for extra help. And, you know, the teachers are doing a great job of, of providing that, but it's, we need more time, right? We need more time. You know, some students n- need to just chill out and relax during lunch, right? And, and recharge for the second half of the day. So if we can get something after school, uh, we're looking at a volunteer basis. Uh, some of the initiatives, like a math lab and a writing lab, uh, we're looking to create, you know, uh, uh, you know, paid positions for teachers. Some, some, you know, uh, stipend or whatever for, for teachers to be able to be there uh to do stuff like that. But, um, you know, it, clubs after school, they traditionally were run after school. Uh, but because of our later start time, it created this need to run clubs during the middle of the day, during lunch. Uh, so we'd like to be able to spread it out, so maybe some clubs can run during lunch and some can work after school. And I, I think the feedback that we've got from students is that would give them more opportunities to be involved in more, more clubs.
So as that tenth period evolves, we certainly have the option to look to flex teacher schedules, right? If it morphs into something where students are scheduled and we know certain students are gonna be there each day. And then it would warrant maybe shifting a teacher's schedule, having them come in late and stay late. But the initial thought is that students will sort of ebb and flow in and out of this. Uh, therefore, there could be times in which maybe no students go to the writing lab, in which case we wouldn't wanna use up a point two of a teacher. Uh, statement would make much more sense in that case. So while we're starting off with this sort of stipend-based flexible model. If it really gains traction and, and turns into something where there is sort of credit-bearing courses being offered. We certainly would then have the ability to flex teacher's schedules. Um, someone who wants to come in a little later, but stay a little later for that, to cover that period ten.
Is this something that would benefit all schools?
So I think the quick answer is yes. The complicated answer is transportation. The end of tenth period corresponds with our busiest time of the day for transportation. Uh, a loop bus for high school students during that time may be feasible. Door-to-door service for elementary and middle school students would be impossible. So, um, it works best at the high school for that reason, because of the transportation needs. Um, possibly seventh and eighth grade students. But once we get into fifth and sixth grade students who are elementary school age, the transportation requirements are so drastically different. We would never be able to provide them the door-to-door service that they're accustomed to at that time, at that point in time. It would, in order for the middle school to fully realize this, we would have to essentially go eliminate the later start. Right? We'd have to separate those two building dismissal times, which would seem a little foolish after all the work that went into it.
I just wanted to mention as well how it would impact the middle school. Um, I, when Matt brought this up, I thought it was a tremendous idea. Um, we see a lot of our seventh and eighth graders that play sports unable to attend after-school clubs. So we're kind of, um, and, and we also have our after-school homework booster lab. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, in which our high schoolers come over and help uh tutor our students. So really, there's a conflict after school for us, so we end at two forty-five. And then our sports start right away. So kids are running to their athletic um participation, whether it be practice or contests. And um, this would hopefully push that back a bit. Where our teachers, um, contractually, it says staying after as needed. So they could stay after as needed our tenth period, provide extra support after school. And then send those kids to those sports or send the kids onto the bus to go home. Um, it would really be a win for us in that our seventh and eighth grade students could do more. And get more support outside of what their typical school day might be.
Um, I just wanted to quickly go back to um the tiger streak and communication. Um, and I wanted to say, um, I like find the tiger streak extremely beneficial. And I know that we've only had a couple of meetings. But um, as a form, um, as a way for students of all grades to come together. And address, you know, how do we get kids to stop cutting the lunch line? How do we stop bullying? Um, one meeting, we split up into the groups and we specifically brainstormed these certain things. That, you know, teachers need perspectives from kids because they don't understand at the same level as we do. Um, and I remember, you know, after the lockdown, we all came together and it was kind of like we formed a community of. You know, it was a safe place and we really got to narrow down like the next steps. And how to make, how to make it better, how to um promote things to the student population. And um, I remember we, we all acknowledged everything that happened. And um, brainstormed ideas and one of the things was the Remind app, um, which we use. I mean, a lot of clubs use it and honor, honor societies use it already. Um, and I don't know about anyone else, but I don't have a house phone anymore. So I don't, you know, it used to be when I was younger, you know, when the phone rings, we don't have school. Um, from the connecteds, but I don't have a house phone anymore, so it's not, that doesn't happen. Um, so I have to like go on the website and check and stuff unless my parents text me. But um, I really found it very beneficial to be um, um, to be like alerted. You know, we have a two-hour delay or there's a hold in place because of this. Um, and although like we're, we can't really have our phones in school anymore. It's, it's, um, it's very comforting. And um, it's important to understand the student perspective. And um, though like technology has like its negatives. I think that like specifically the Remind app is very positive. And um, especially during like emergency situations when we have that form of contact, I think that's very important. Um, and I think that we should promote it a lot more because not everyone is even signed up for the school-wide Remind. And I think that it's, it's very important. And I just wanted to say that I really like this Tiger Street Club, Tiger Street Club. Because it's very specific and comforting to the student population. And I think that it will be very beneficial to, you know, starting like promoting specific weeks. Like Kindness Week or this like Red Ribbon Week or stuff to um spread awareness about things. And then also brainstorm, you know, how to fix certain problems in the school that teachers need to understand. And hear like how to fix, how to fix it from like the students brainstorming and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I, yeah, just like the kudos to the students. Uh, you know, we were getting reports like, you know, students were unruly on the lunch line. It was one of the things that we threw, like, we're sitting there going like, I, I, you know, what do we do about this? And we threw it out to the students and they brainstormed. But like, one of the things that came out of that was like, well, would they're, they're on the lunch line for like fifteen minutes. You know, imagine standing on a lunch here, line, waiting to get lunch for fifteen, you're hungry as it is, hangry if you call it, uh, right? And, and like, so the realization from the students was, well, what do you expect them to do? You know, they're on line for fifteen minutes waiting to get lunch. Of course, like behavior like that is gonna start to rise up. We're not talking like, it was just sophomore kind of behavior um by seniors, which is, no. Uh, but, but you know what I mean? Like, that kind of perspective, perspective allowed us to go to the, the, um, you know, people who run the, the lunch, what is it? Wit, Wit's uh?
Witson's.
Witson's, Wit's, yeah, I meant my Witson's, that's right. Uh, yeah, so we were able to go and talk with them about, okay, how do we help speed up this process of getting students through the line? And that will help alleviate some of that behavior that we're seeing. And that really came from our students and the brainstorming session that we have with them. So, really incredibly beneficial. I mean, uh, I think if you wanna do anything right, you have to listen to the students.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I think we could solve the other problem now. Jeanie, can you make sure Reese gets all five AM phone calls?
Yes.
Text messages. We can, we can make that happen.
I think you broke several.
Broke the mic. Wow, I dropped the mic.
Yeah, the mic dropped?
All right, let's see if this'll work. The perils of being shorter than everybody else, you have to move the mic so much. All right, there we go. I'm also regretting wearing heels tonight. It's been a long juncture up here. Okay, so, um, I did wanna touch a little bit on the science of reading because it is going to touch K-12. And New York State has issued new literacy briefs. If you remember back in twenty sixteen seventeen, when they first um came out with the new ELA standards. They had released advanced literacies briefs. And um, those were uh, often spoke to the um ENL population. And making sure, you know, how you could incorporate literacies into those areas. As well as um focusing on, you know, different parts of the standards. This really touched on, it's so important, K-12, to have explicit direct instruction in literacy in particular. It dispelled myths, like, you know, you don't learn to read and then read to learn. You're always doing both. You're always learning to read and you're always reading to learn. Um, so really important information that's going to be important for us to be sharing throughout the next couple of years with all of our teachers. So we do have, um, and during our superintendent conference day, we intend on sharing these briefs with our middle and high school teachers. Having them really dive into them and understand them, understand what secondary literacy instruction looks like. Um, and uh, Matt and I were able to talk about this a little bit um the other day. So he's aware and he's getting um into the information as well himself so that he could be a strong instructional leader. Um, but it's, it's going to be a learning curve for our teachers in general. Because folks often think of literacy as more of an elementary school task. And then once they come up to the older grades, they are ready to do those big essays and read those big books. And, you know, um, that's not always the case. And we're going to have to really make sure everyone understands what goes into um actually the act of reading, the neuroscience behind it. So that'll be some work that we're doing over the next couple of um months and years. It'll take a while for teachers to be trained, to learn, and to understand the role literacy plays in their content area and in their grade levels. So we are continuing in terms of our district initiatives, our multi-tiered systems of support leadership team. Our team is working on a communication plan and hopefully that will be issued out to the district by the end of this year. Um, basically communicating what our systems of support are for academic and behavioral needs. Um, what happens at tier one in Putnam Valley, what happens in tier two, and what happens at tier three. Um, we are really focused this year on that generative artificial intelligence work. Uh, we have a future of education team that meets quarterly at PNW BOSI's. To dive deep into the different program softwares and trends that are happening with generative AI. And we're doing our own work here in our district so that we can better understand as teachers prompt engineering. How to utilize these platforms to um create efficiencies and productivity. Um, and also how to make sure we can teach our students how to appropriately use these platforms and these tools. Because um, it's really important for our students to understand the difference between, you know, essentially integrity, right? What is your work, what is your effort, your critical thinking put into? And what is a machine learning system um giving you? So are you asking the right questions, getting the best possible information you can? How are you using that information that AI is giving you? Are you using it to help write your paper? Are you using it to help you understand how to better write your paper? So there are a lot of great things about AI, but we really need to, as a district, um, take a look at it, better understand what's out there. A lot of these programs do cost money. Um, some of them were free and now they have subscriptions and it's per person or per student. You know, a simple example is ChatGPT, which everyone is familiar with. There was a three-point-five and a four. And if you pay twenty dollars a month, you get four, which is better and better quality responses, more information, more tools and apps. And experiences you can have. Um, and if you only have three-point-five, you get what that is, right? It's a more outdated model, it's not as efficient, doesn't give you the best information, doesn't give you the best responses. So there's an inequity in that. So how do we best support our students and give them the tools they need? And make sure they all have access to something that is high-quality, that is going to support their learning? And then how do we teach them how to use it to support their learning and not replace their learning? So that is our work with generative AI um AI at this time. We are continuing to enhance our K-12 ENL support. Um, our parent learning opportunities are growing in number. Um, I just love when our schools have parent nights where they invite them in, whether you've been to an IB night, a literacy night, a math night. Um, there's so many opportunities. We had our first NYPD night last year, I anticipate we're gonna have another soon. So it's really great getting our parents in the doors to learn with us. I know I hosted an AI evening a couple of months ago, um that we had parents come to learn all about how to use AI and, you know, some of the dangers and things to be aware of. So uh, these are fairly well attended and we'd love to see even more parents coming. We're continuing our diversity, equity and inclusion work. Our team right now is analyzing data. We actually met earlier today. We looked at some data points like attendance and even academic testing data. So uh, we continue to do that work to guide our responses to better support the students, all students in our schools and create a welcoming and affirming environment for all of our families and students. Our CBT rollout, that is spanning buildings, so we are um continuing to support teachers in training. We had a session during superintendent conference day in August to introduce the platform. I've um met with different teacher teams, given a presentation, provided those slides with links to the different, New York State and Lyric um resource centers. So they could go in, they could take the test themselves or do sample questions rather. Really to help them understand how to use it and then of course scheduling with our, our folks about, you know, our principals about how to, when and how to put these in place. And we are launching a K-12 writing committee that will meet for the first time at the end of this month. We will be meeting monthly to examine writing and writing expectations across the grades. And by the end of this year, of this school year, we will have a continuum that we will then need to introduce to everyone across the district, get feedback on, continuously revise, but also provide something for folks to understand what they should be expecting at each grade level, what students should be coming in with and what they should be leaving with. All the while, these great initiatives we have for Putnam Valley, for Putnam Valley students guided by what we know about our Putnam Valley families and students, we are maintaining pace with the NISID changes because NISID is always throwing things in our direction. From the computer-based testing to the literacy initiative, which both are actually very important and we've already been doing quite a bit of work on. And then these newest science assessments, that was, you know, something that very much has taken up a lot of time of all of our teachers, now third and fourth grade as well, because we are spreading these across the grade levels so that, you know, we can get them accomplished over the years. And of course, the memo came out recently about the um earth science, earth and space and biology, so preparing our science teachers for those. And recently, NISID has uh provided another initiative, the workplace violence policy, which you will read, have a first reading tonight. And we'll have to form a committee to um, you know, walk through our buildings, evaluate our spaces. We will have to add it as part of our GCN module components for the beginning of the year. You know, different steps we have to take. So these are, all of these things are things that we also have to include along with our initiatives that we have planned for each of our buildings in our district already. So what are the budgetary implications? What, what's going to go into the work behind all of the work that you're seeing being done? Obviously, curriculum writing is always important and always being done, whether they're writing MYP units or they are developing supplementary material for, you know, a lesson in scholastic or something along those lines. Incorporating this generative AI and deciding, are we going to choose a platform and pay for it like Diffit? Which is great, has a lot of great tools for special education in particular. But if it costs twenty dollars a student, is that the platform we go with? You know, we have to really think about those things. And we have to examine them closely, but that would be a budgetary implication if we do happen to utilize any of these tools that are coming out. And things to help our MYP exploration like TOTL or Manage Back. If we're adding more teachers or more students, we have to think about those. Presenting and having our teacher leaders present or having a consultant come in to present. We have a wonderful generative AI consultant coming in for superintendent conference day to present to both middle and high school. So that'll be a great opportunity, but when we start talking about some of these initiatives, we will be bringing in experts to help us better understand what we're doing, as well as of course the MYP and IB lifts that we're doing already. Materials for E and L math, if we are exploring a material program for seventh and eighth grade, we will be purchasing materials in addition to professional learning and coaching for that program. And our E and L resources, we always want to make sure we have a lot of Spanish translated materials for our students. So when the, a math program has a Spanish component, we're going to want that. And then training, we're going to continue our training for our IB programs. And of course, DPs, sometimes the programs change in DPs, so we need to send our teachers out for training for that as well. We're a firm believer in empowering our students, our families, our teachers. There are a lot of different ways our students are being empowered and you heard a little bit about from Matt today about the Tiger Streak and Vision Quest, how he's empowering colleagues. So we have our student voices on steering committees. I believe um the high school steering committee is including students as well. We have our community project in MYP, which is going to take students, have them form a group and have them solve an issue in the community that they've researched and they develop a real solution for. So we're looking to Miranda Hochberg, our new librarian for the middle school, to become trained in the community project so that she can begin this work with our middle school students um next year. Our stage crew, our gratitude festival, our voices, regional leadership, all of these things, these are our students who went to Ariel, all stayed for music and, just, you know, excellent performers. I, I can't say enough about the ways Putnam Valley students lead in multiple capacities. So there's a lot of, a lot to be proud of there. And we lead, our teachers and our um colleagues are leading all the time. Margaret leads the P and W Principals Forum and she's also a SANES trustee. SANES, if you're not familiar, is the um School Administrators Association of New York State. So Margaret is our regional representative for SANES and she goes up with Mike Plotkin and has really important meetings, both virtually and, and at Albany, so that's really great. Latisha Payne leads locally, she leads that P and W AP network, really terrific work there. Dr. Messera, he is one of our parent opportunities leaders. He leads that working with anxiety that you may have attended. But he actually brought that to the, I'm going to get this, the Nashville, uh international, at the Association for Coral Directors of America. So he presented that this just, this past weekend nationally at Nashville, um which is fantastic. We have Ryan Elsasser, you saw the wonderful work with Eduardo today. Ryan took the initiative to put that in place, to begin that nomination process and do all of that work and all of that coordination to make that happen. So when our teachers take an opportunity to lead in that way, we really want to celebrate it. They did something amazing for a student and it started with Ryan nominating the student. Fantastic. Putnam Valley Middle School held the first ever regional MYP institute. So we had a middle years program institute regionally and we invited other districts that do the MYP in the area to our school and we held it in the high school library. And that, um, that's a picture from it right there. So we had teachers from all over ninth grade, tenth grade, sixth, seventh, eighth grade who do the middle years program in their classrooms, from Solmers and Dobbs and so on, come together to actually learn and write lessons and write units together. It was really great work. I didn't highlight it, but Alexis Thornton is president-elect for the New York State Association of Foreign Language Teachers. And I presented at the NISPA conference this past fall, so. We are doing a lot of great things. PB is leading nationally, we're leading locally, we're leading statewide. You know, you'll see Putnam Valley just about everywhere and I'm sure there's people I missed on here, but you do run out of space on a slide eventually. Or it becomes very small, like this. So we are always empowering our educators. I'm so excited to say we have an amazing scholastic coordinator in Carrie Burdette. She is just doing phenomenal work. She's led a guided reading workshop last year. She led last night at the elementary um literacy night. So she is just really taking her leadership role very seriously, working with her colleagues, supporting them in lesson writing and, and in unit writing and even in developing supplementary materials. We have our foundations facilitator that Margaret spoke to earlier, Teresa Warwick. She is fantastic. She took on a real lion's share of the foundations coaching and program last year. She um took an online program to get a certificate and shadowed a coach for four visits throughout our building to become a foundations facilitator, which means she can support teachers in foundations on the ground in the building. And we don't need to bring Wilson in um every time we need teachers trained and we don't necessarily have to send everybody out for training or updated training. So having that foundations facilitator will create consistency in our program. We'll make sure if we have a lead replacement come in, they have someone who can support them and model and demo for them. It's very important work. It means we don't miss a step in our phonics work at all here in Putnam Valley. Our middle years program coordinator I spoke to earlier, our DP coordinator, our E and L coordinator. These are teacher leaders that are stepping up to lead superintendent conference day sessions, to lead after-school initiatives, to um work in something like a summer program like that MYP Institute. Mary Kay and Steph are so important in that work. In addition, we have different teams, my future of education team that I'm working with on the generative AI study. We have our teachers, leading teacher center workshops. So Bill Scampoli and Keith Fiore and Alexis Thornton actually teach other teachers around the region how to use certain platforms or how to do, um, you know, uh, how to understand adolescents better. There's so many things our teachers are doing and leading in this area. We're going to have a great K-12 writing committee that is going to work very closely on developing that K-12 continuum. And Margaret has her wonderful K-four writing committee of also which I'm a part. And they are great thinkers around writing and the explicit instruction of writing, which is so important. In our new employee orientation, everyone comes. It's not new teacher orientation anymore, it's new employee. Everyone's invited. And everyone from the district is invited to meet and put a face to those emails our teachers are going to be sending. So rather than sending out to avoid to someone you've never met, you're actually going to meet Dana. You're going to meet Jeannie, you're going to meet Dave Cantrowitz. So you're going to meet all of these people. Everyone's involved um in that new teacher orientation. And then our opening superintendent conference day, when we choose our path, we try to give our teachers a real conference experience where they have control over their schedule. They have a bunch of different opportunities to attend. They can choose to do a mental health program in the morning, an E and L program after that, a computer-based testing program after that, a Ben Q study. They can choose where they go. We try to create a conference feel for them so that they get the opportunity to not just be scheduled into something, but to choose what they like and, and where they feel they need the most support. We also want to empower our community members. We invite in our first responders to talk to our students. We have our building steering committees, our district advisory committee that did that great work with our core values and identifying them. Our parent learning opportunities are great opportunities for our parents to get involved to learn not only what we're doing in the classroom, but what they need to do, know to learn to help their student. Our PTA and PVEF are our best partners. We work very closely with them in a lot of ways. It's always a delight to attend their events. They do such amazing work around our district in um efforts to support our students. So that's so important to us. We have our newsletters and our listening hours in multiple ways. We try to make sure our community is aware of what's going on and how they can get involved. And also make their voices heard. Did I go too far? This is a good focus area for us right now because we are actually seeing several new families with students who are speaking English as a new language coming into our district. We've had several join us just these past two weeks since we've been back from break. Our E and L coordinator is a leading professional learning for us. We are currently exploring and piloting different tools for translation to improve our communication with our students first and foremost and also our families so that when they come, they feel welcomed. They feel like they belong, they feel like people understand them. So we're working with something called Timekettle, which you heard um Mike Lee and Dave Cantrowitz speak about. There's an earpiece and also an iPad. And on the iPad, you'll see the text of what's being said, but they're hearing it translated in real time in their ear. So if you think about sitting in a classroom and you don't understand the language, but you can understand if you have this earpiece in. Microsoft Translate, again, this comes primarily text-based. So they have a, an iPad and the teacher's speaking, the iPad's kind of recording and documenting what's being said in the language of choice. So if you have a Ukrainian student sitting next to a Mandarin Chinese student, student sitting next to a Spanish-speaking student, all of these students are getting it in the language that's been selected in Microsoft. And we are doing an admin part one fifty-four review and training if the snow will let us have our meeting. Oh, that's um, that's our dance, our IB dance with Nicole Donna. So they're using the dance bar there, which is great. Of course, our innovation needs the right tools. This is our uh, our balloon parade from Jen Bruno, who's our innovation lab teacher. She had students put on a balloon parade, which was really cool. Our future of education team is exploring the AI tools and platforms, as I mentioned earlier. They may need, there, there may be some budgetary implications in there if we do purchase or pay for a subscription for students to access generative AI. There is in Google Bard, which um is not necessarily, we're finding as sharp as ChatGPT and some other uh generative AI chat um programs. So we really want to be careful to consider what's going to be best for our students. So we have to examine that and examine it in the context of our budget. We'll continue to explore our cutting-edge education practices, math programs and things like that, the MYP work, to be able to provide what everybody needs um in terms of devices, software or whatever, like TOTL. And then of course, the translation tools and platforms, once we decide which pilot we think works best for which population. We will obviously want to buy materials and hopefully we'll have some grant funding to help with that, but you know, given how much our population is growing, it may not yet be enough and we may need to seek to purchase tools in our budget. Any questions?
Good job.
Lot of work happening.
Lot of great work.
Lot of really good work happening. Thank you so much for all you do, Jackie. We're blessed to have you.
It is an honor and a privilege to be here.
Thank you, Jackie, and administrators also.
So, and thank you all. Obviously tremendous amount of work went into uh creating that presentation and I think it, it still doesn't do service to all the work that happens in our buildings each and every day. So thank you to our administrators, to Jackie and to obviously all our teachers and support staff to make all of these initiatives possible. Thank you all.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the, the policy eighty-one thirty dash point twenty, workplace violence prevention. Um, it's the first reading with a request to waive the second reading due to the required implementation date.
So the workplace violence uh prevention requirement was issued by New York State. Sounds like familiar, right Sam? So uh, the initial date when this was supposed to happen, the guidance came out actually after that date. Then it was supposed to start. So I think we had quickly touched upon uh the upcoming date. So we have until February third to have a policy in place. We don't meet again until after February third, so uh that's the reason why we're waiving the second reading. The policy that we do have is based upon the model policy issued by NISPA. So we've gone through it, uh shared it with our policy committee and now uh we are proposing it for a first reading now. And then uh we'll be asking to waive the second reading and adopting that policy uh at the, later in the meeting. The next step is we have to sort of do almost a risk assessment within our building. So we've invited some of our uh unions to uh walk around our buildings with actually, Jackie and Dave Spittle will be facilitating the tours and it's sort of the next piece of the compliance puzzle. And then the final piece is training. So we're working with uh GCN, the Global Compliance Network, to offer um, to create a video aligned with this new workplace violence prevention, in which case we'll get everyone sort of certified using their video platform. And all of this needs to be completed by, I believe it's May third, twenty twenty-five.
Good to go.
Student representatives, do you have a report?
Yes, we do. All right, so starting off, um, I'm going to go a little fast because it's, it's late. So last week we had our chorus concert and, our high school chorus concert and last night we had our band concert. I believe last week, but I don't really remember, the class of twenty-two, the class of twenty twenty-three alumni returned for their alumni breakfast and they spoke to the senior class about their college experience. Last Friday, we had PJ Day for Emily. Um, it was really heartwarming to see how many people participated. I believe the high school raised over fifteen hundred dollars in donations, which was really amazing. Um, and you know, that goes towards her getting a van for transportation, for appointments and therapy and anything that she needs. We have our upcoming Valentine's Day carnations fundraiser sponsored by the class of twenty twenty-four. So you can send a carnation to a friend or a teacher and then we also have singing telegrams from Temple Mental, our acapella club, which um you can have them deliver your flower with a song, so.
That's amazing.
I like that. I like that a lot.
We have um sports successes with Winter We have sports successes with winter sports, new faces for all the teams, you know, learning to readjust and work together. Just to name a few, we have our JV cheer team won first place in their division a couple of days ago at a competition. We had a boys' basketball game tonight. The girls' basketball team is doing really well as always. So I'm a part of a program at the library. It's called Reading Buddies. And we actually tried to implement this into the elementary school, but we didn't get very far with it. But we were working with Mrs. Tarkington, you know, to bring older kids. We wanted to bring older kids into the elementary school as like guest readers, you know, just to work with the different districts. And we actually went to the library and created a little event, I guess. And it's actually for community service for the high schoolers. So you read to the little kids and it's, we had two, a successful event for the holidays and we have another one on Tuesday. So if anyone needs volunteer hours, that's a really good way to get them. And we're working with the, the library. They want to bring more people into the library and especially teens. There, we brainstormed with them and created a committee to bring more teenagers into the library. So that was, Reading Buddies was a way for that, for community service hours. And then we have upcoming Science National Honor Society induction this month and also English National Honor Society inductions in February.
Thank you. Been busy.
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Luft, did they steal your thunder again?
Pretty much have nothing. So just for those keeping track, we've had two snow weather-related days. Technically, one of them was a rain day and then one snow day earlier this week. I know everyone's very anxious about tomorrow. I'll be up at 4:15 in the morning. I'm not so optimistic, so.
Early dismissal.
I plan on seeing all of your smiling faces here at 7:30 in the morning.
Yep.
As we said, mention, January 5th was the alumni breakfast where they come back and speak with the seniors. It's always a very successful event. We did host the district advisory committee where we continue our focus on parent engagement. That was our determined focus for this school year, exploring opportunities and really sort of defining what parent engagement means. Maybe, we had a long conversation. It doesn't necessarily mean number of parents coming out to an event at night. There's many other ways in which we can engage our parents. The Pajamas for Emily fundraiser, as you had mentioned, there was over three thousand dollars fundraised across the district. That was a huge success. I know the family is very appreciative of that money, which will go towards getting them a vehicle where they can safely transport Emily around. I attended the high school science research practice tonight. That's always a very humbling experience. They talk so fast to get under their 12-minute time limit, but it's really impressive to see the quality and level of work that our students are able to produce through the science research program. As we had mentioned, I attended, many of us attended the high school literacy evening last evening. It's always impressive to hear our teachers talk so passionately about the subject. And our high school band concert happened at the same time. I don't know how we keep doing that, but sometimes we're not great at scheduling. Today, we had our DEI meeting, which actually followed a data review meeting regarding our DEI initiatives, looking at a wide range of data across our school district. And some upcoming events, the high school ENL Family Night on January 29th and the High School Science National Honor Society coming up on the 30th. That's it. Thanks.
He also did it fast. Okay, so we're going to move into new business. Item one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Barbara Dower as an 11-week long-term substitute French teacher at the high school effective January 8th, 2024 through March 15th, 2024, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Ed, at the substitute salary rate of $200 per day. Ms. Dower holds French 712 permanent certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Lucas Demay to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing on January 22nd, 2024 and terminating on January 21st, 2028 in the teaching assistant tenure area at the annual compensation of Step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule and in accordance with the PV CSD policy 9250. Mr. Demay holds childhood education 1 through 6 initial certification.
Second. Questions or comments? How are these babies getting to be so old? Oh my goodness. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Office Assistant Yvonne Maza from the district effective the close of Business Day on January 12th, 2024 as per Document 112 over 24 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2024-25 district calendar as per Document Number 108 dash 24 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second, with a very quick comment, that I'm very pleased to see that you designated or clarified the snow days. Thank you, Dr. Luft.
Our pleasure.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a first reading and waive a second reading of Policy 8130 dot 20, Workplace Violence Prevention as per Document 111 slash 24 attached to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting. The Policy 8130 dot 20 will be considered adopted as of this date.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. So, public comment on any topic? All right, upcoming meeting topics and presentations?
I was going to ask if Dan had any comments about Jackie dropping his microphone? Okay, just checking. So upcoming topics, our next meeting is scheduled for February 1st and that'll be our budget presentation for athletics and technology, so two budget presentations. Following that, February 15th will be our facilities and special education presentations and then March 5th is our anticipated first budget presentation.
Sounds like a plan. Board member comments?
I just want to congratulate the entire music department of our district and that's from the elementary all the way up to the high school. They put on some outstanding presentations, chorus, the band. You know, the choral concert under Dr. Messera the other day and Mr. Odell yesterday, it just blew me away. The kids are so talented and the instructors have brought them there.
Didn't you love the opening of the choral concert with, with, when they were standing with their hand over their heart?
I thought, they're all going to say the pledge together, whatever, and then they started that rhythmic, it was incredible. And I, I really believe, you know, that's the impression that people in our community have, that we have a private school here under the domain of, you know, a public institution because we offer so much varied and terrific programs for our kids and that's just outstanding.
Anybody else?
The science research, I just want to comment on that. Jeremy, did you say they're all smarter than you are, much smarter than I am?
You brought your husband.
So I brought my husband because he's much smarter than I am. And it's just amazing, these, what these students can put out. Speak really quick. I was just blown away. So it was very interesting to see that. And I give Kate Westervelt a lot of credit for a little time she had. My question was, I wasn't quite sure, did these students only start this year?
No.
No, those are students that are.
Okay, good. Okay, that makes much more sense.
Part of the challenge of filling the science research vacancy was in the inception of the program, we began phasing in one grade level at a time. So we started with 10th graders, then 10th, 11th graders. So it was really a three-year phase in to get students to that point. When you replace someone mid-program, they inherit students in all three phases of the program. So it's a huge lift your first year to get the notice students, the research, the programs and to get up to speed. So it was really impressive to see how much work that CAT has done already to get those students to those places or continue their work from what they've done over the last several years.
I was very impressed.
My topics were, for my, for anyone keeping track in my room, it was menopause and PFAS. So one of those I know way more about than the other, but those were the two presentations I saw. Both very educational.
Very, very impressed. On Monday, I'm attending the Westchester Putnam School Board Association Board Member Community Conversation and to go over the Board of Ed communications and we're all invited to that. I don't know if any, it's virtual.
I signed up.
Yeah, I signed up too.
Should be an interesting opportunity.
I just want to highlight the tremendous amount of work that our schools are tasked to complete. And being in the field, I don't think that we have ever felt as much pressure as we do now with the number of things that we're being asked to do. It's nothing short of a miracle every single day. So I really just want to applaud the work that we saw here tonight. It was long because there's a lot of things happening and they're all wonderful and it takes a lot of people and a lot of really good leadership to make it happen. So kudos to everybody who was a part of tonight's efforts, which is really our entire district. We're moving this ship in the right direction and that's really wonderful to see, so thank you.
Do you have anything before I jump in again?
Nope.
Okay, I'll be real quick. I just want to, I forgot to thank Jill for the risk audit and the work that your department did. So thank you so much for all of that. And, oh, the custodians, the groundskeeper, everyone that, you know, going to the events over the last few evenings and seeing how great the parking lots look and I'm not scared to walk outside, I'm more scared of my own driveway. So they've done a great job and I just want to call that out.
That's true.
It is true.
That was the most exciting part of my snow day, was getting to ride in the plow with Brian for a little while. And I stopped by the school to check on it. He, smartly wouldn't let me drive it, but I got to ride shotgun.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, good night and be safe on the 60-degree day tomorrow.